We're retiring all the meetings all three times. We're all meeting to order because we actually have a pretty lengthy agenda and so we're going to try to stay on time. Oh, actually, I can see the clock very clearly. Would you like a turn?
Melissa, what's the bottom line?
There's already two of it.
With the number three.
Got it, thank you.
Your timekeeper Melissa, do you want me to do a time?
Yeah.
Craig is obviously not here today, neither is Rick, but we have everybody else. So let's review the agenda. I'm going to make an announcement that the meeting is being videotaped. Review this evening's agenda. We have minutes, we actually only have minutes from the December board meeting, no February special board meeting, the January one because it was just so long and there was a lot of content. Those. Update from our parents and faculty representative and ED update. For chair business, we actually have quite a bit to cover. Update from the complaint task force investigating our management of getting complaints. An update to the community about our charitable status. We'll summarize the annual meeting, both a quick review of progress against 2014 goals as well as very preliminary priorities that have been identified for 2015. I will ask the ED selection task force and the collection bargaining task force to provide brief updates. The governance chair, which happens to be me, is going to review the board self-assessment results. Annually, we do complete board self-assessment and I will go through those. And then Melissa is going to cover third-party survey options that she would like to apply. The task force on cultural management practices, which is a joint board and administrative task force, is going to provide a update. And then we'll have updates from each of our committees. And within governance, this has been deferred a couple of times, but I think we'll be able to get to it today. Roger is going to be giving us an overview on open meeting law. We will go into executive session to discuss strategy in respect of collective bargaining. Any questions or wondering?
Is that the only thing in the second session?
Yes.
Allow me to use it.
Yes.
And the new course approval will be moved to the faculty report?
I think yes. You want to move it up or do you want to?
It's going to move up, but.
Will there be a separate?
Yeah.
If I may, if we can do it just because of the sequencing of slides we did for things, if we could just, if I can report after in the end, can we? Okay. All right. So with that, can we take a look at the minutes from both the December board meeting as well as the February special meeting? It's circulated by Roger two days ago.
I made a change in the December meeting in the faculty representative report. The third paragraph, what on the last line said disseminated? I think that I meant implemented, or is that implemented?
The chairman, is that another implemented?
Yeah. Is that okay?
Sarah, did you get that?
I did.
Any other changes to the December?
Let me come over here. This is the seminar to the president.
Oh, I didn't have also announced that Ken's approval did come back from the before. Can't read on the second.
No, this first.
His first second?
Really cool.
Minutes from the February special board meeting. Oh, sorry. Okay, can we vote on the December meeting? February special board meeting, this was a short one, this is how specific the goal is.
Take a voice, can I make a statement?
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, what's happening? All right, we'll move on to parent representative update. Okay, faculty representative update.
Yeah, the only thing I want to say is the snow days, I think of all the snow days have the faculty feeling a little bit well behind, you know, just that many days and especially with the vacation that's in there and we're starting to worry we might never get out of here or things like that. But, you know, we've already extended the term three days, so March is always long. That's the way it is. We're the cookie crumbles.
Want me to put you basically quickly on?
Sure.
To dispel some of the bugs. One is that we're, we sent it out to staff today so that parents know we are extending the date for the end of term three. So it was scheduled to end on, on March 3rd, March, no, April, what was it? It was scheduled to end on April the 3rd, I think it was. Anyway, it's extended now to April the 9th, which is a Thursday, so we've added four days to term three. And then grades will be due on the 16th, the following Thursday, right before the Friday period for April vacation. So we wanted to be able to add a little bit there. The other one is a lot of people are nervous that we're going to tap into the April vacation. And so that's why I said I want to address this, so I dispelled the rumors. You know, we start early and we don't also, didn't have a lot of professional development days, full days in the middle of the year like some districts have that disrupt the calendar. So we still have several days in the month of June and we're keeping our fingers crossed that we've had all the days we need. And so although we're three days over our eligibility, five additional, I don't see that we'll have any need to go to table or, and even before we went there, I think we could get some other options, but that would be something we discussed if we got there. We're not, we have playroom left, so.
Is the calendar updated automatically to add those three days?
If by law, you have, when you design your calendar, you have to build in your five snow days. So that's reflected in there. So the three days are now just added because we've gone beyond.
So the, and the website?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
It was updated for the last one and I just finished updating, I was checking with Miriam before it gets done, but I thought we know he's ready to put up the updates.
Well, then we can do it. For the three days, we can just update that.
Right.
And we'll make some adjustments for the end of term stuff.
I put in the end of term stuff. And also, I now show the snow days when they happen, so people have that.
Oh, good, because people would like to make some corrections.
And by the way, just as a point of reference also, it does not impact the seniors. The senior end date remains the same. That's not impacted.
Thank you, Jeff. Move to the executive director update.
Okay. Oh, well, here we go. Let's see what I can do about that. So, a couple of things, just our page around campus. Here we go. It's all right? Thank you, fantastic. First, something exciting out of our athletic department. We're proud to announce that this week we were voted and accepted into the Colonial Athletic League, which is pretty exciting. And again, I've said this before, but referencing the fact that we're only 10 years old, for us to be able to have so many competitive teams that can compete at a high enough level to move into a more competitive league is a pretty good pat on the back for our students and our coaches and our whole athletic program. So it allows for more competition being in this league. It's also nice because our kids won't have to travel this far. Some of our, maybe we have a couple where we go like an hour and a half or so. All the schools in this league will be closer to us, so that's helpful and they cut back also on some dismissal times. And also that all of the sports that we have are also sports that are in this league right now, which is not the case in our current league. And because it's a more competitive league, it will also give our students more exposure with other coaches and colleges who may be looking at athletes. I know that through Mr. Albuquerque, I've heard that in conversations he's already had with coaches and parents and students, they're pretty excited about being a little bit more competitive. We have students who are athletes in soccer and in basketball who are dominating the league currently that we're in. And so now this really helps to give them a little more competition.
Do you know any example of any of the schools that are in this league?
Well, I will tell you that I know that Abby Kelly is going with us. They're another school that's been accepted. So those are two new ones that are going into those, but I apologize, no, I know. A principal update, just so that you know, by tomorrow afternoon, folks can be expecting an alert now message from me regarding the principal update. Google Apps for Education. So we're going to be rolling this out and we mentioned it, I believe, at a previous board meeting, but now we're ready to go with it. It's a web-based suite of programs. It includes Gmail, which is great because again, currently, right now, our students are using their personal email accounts and sometimes communicating with teachers that way. We really want things to be on a very professional level where people are using school-sponsored email accounts, so that's a change we're going to be making. It also gives them access to Google Drive and Google Calendar, which allows for a lot more sharing of documents. So we're pretty excited about this. It also means that students need, don't need to worry about flash drives or external drives. If they have access to the internet, then it means they're going to have access to their school working documents. We're going to roll it out in grade eight only and to start with, and then in probably a week or two, when we're sure about getting the bugs out and, you know, kind of checking how we introduce it to folks, then we're going to roll it out to everybody, okay? Originally, we thought we were going to, in fact, we started to propose it at a previous board meeting, that we would need a new Google Apps specific policy. But I've gone back with some of our folks and really taken a closer look at what already exists and also a document that goes out to all students each year so that they have access to even logging in and that goes out in our computer classrooms. So with those combined, we're covered. So we don't need to add anything, which is good because it answered the question about let's keep one document. The only change will be is that we will be sending out a permission slip to probably almost all sixth grade parents because anybody under the age, six and seven depends, anybody under the age of 13 needs to have parent permission in order to be able to access the Google Apps. So there will be some permission slips going out for that. But otherwise, we're ready to go and notice, formal notice will be sent out to parents about introducing this program and a little bit of summary of what I've introduced here.
Maria?
Yes.
Two questions. One is how much work was it?
Two. Well, I, we worked with our consultants on, a consultant regarding Google Apps, if I wasn't regular ones, we went out and looked around for some better pricing and we've been able to find somebody who was able to set it up, but it's really not that big of an impact. And I feel like it really adds a better dimension for privacy and for us controlling. And everything that we do is archived, so by using our school email accounts and keeping everything very much on a professional and workplace sort of environment for students and staff, I think it's adequate. But what I'm most excited about is the opportunity to share, you know, so that students, especially if we move to a one-to-one environment where students can sit and in real time together we can work on a document and grow it and build it, I think it really will open up some doors. And a lot of students are using these kinds of tools, but they've had to be doing it with accounts that they set up on their own, how to be doing it with school sponsor, which is the way it should be.
Do you envision that the staff will also be using Google Gmail, so that?
Yeah, well, yes and no. So the, right now, we're not going to do a transfer over because I think in the middle of the year would just be too complex and cumbersome. But the expectation is probably that this summer, we will try to make a conversion because we need to take some time and work with consultants on getting all of the mail moved over. But I think that folks will find it easier when everything just synchronizes together, the mail and the calendars and just provide easier access.
Does this calendar would replace the process now?
No, this is just internal calendars for our work environment, yeah. But the email accounts, I believe, and how did you my deal in? I think you need email accounts in order, they need to get them in order to access these things now, but it doesn't mean that we're doing the transfer of our current email system.
The email address doesn't change. It's just a back end, the data needs to be migrated and that doesn't impact any incoming email or anything of that sort. Currently, they are two separate, but they're still, AMSAS.org still works. The email addresses are not going to change.
Will it ever change? So like, because when you have a school email address, it makes it, like when you go to other places or sign up for stuff, you don't want to use a Gmail address.
Oh, no, 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 no. It's about, I thought you were referencing the use of Outlook versus the use of a Gmail platform. But no, everything will be, when the time comes, it would all be migrated over. I don't think it changes the addresses at all.
The signing up and anything doesn't change. You can still use data phone and AMSAS.org for all the signings. Nothing changes.
You're not going to have a Gmail. You don't need to redo your business card.
Okay.
You know how much I like change. Okay? So that's it for this session.
Okay, great. So any comments? Is there anyone signed up for a little comment?
Nope.
Nope?
Nope.
Oh, another 10 minutes, okay. All right, great. I know. We should have you as a timekeeper. All right, now we get into the 30 minutes for a whole bunch of stuff. Chris, do you have a update on the board's complaint there?
Almost there, finishing touches.
Okay.
So we will close it next. It's close, but nothing out of town.
So that'd be one more meeting. The charter renewal. So I am pleased to announce that AMSA was granted a renewal for the next five years. So congratulations to everybody who made that happen. It is a conditional approval. There are four conditions that need to be met over the course of this year and they really have to do with documentation issues. One is that because we do not have a permanent executive director and we don't have a principal and we have an interim assistant principal, there is obviously a justifiable concern that the permanent leadership structure of the school does not yet exist. And so one of the issues is to, the first thing was that actually board governance is going to be looked at a little bit more closely because the board is working very closely with Mary Ann and the existing leadership team. So the four items are that we will submit to DEES our board agendas and meeting minutes and all our documents before the meeting actually happens, which we just submitted to ourselves, so we'll just submit to that. That we need to provide by June 30th, a organizational chart with the leadership structure of the school and definition of those senior leaders' roles and responsibilities. That by, I think it's September, we will have completed a board self-assessment, which is an in-depth one, which I assume is different than the one that we're doing now, then we'll get clarity on that. And by the end of the year, that we have an open meeting law presentation from an outside consultant. And that is actually in response to the fact that there have been previous open meeting law mistakes by the board, actually not in the last two years or three years, but during this past five-year timeframe. And so it, just to be clear and to ensure that we're fully transparent and also to the community that we'll do those four things. So those are actually four very simple conditions for us to meet. There's really nothing substantive which is really great, what we need to improve past. So we will also be working on an alert now to allow some kind of easy.
To announce?
Yeah, to announce that, right. Okay, summary of the annual day meeting. Can you pull, progress against 2014 goals? This is in your board practice as well. All right, so these were the goals that we had laid out for 2014, at the beginning of 2014. And the bottom line here is that we actually did make substantial progress against many of these goals. There is no question that by the second quarter of the year, the board was focused much more on internal issues than external perceptions and diverted from some of these longer-term goals. And despite all of that, there was still a substantial amount of progress made. So we did agree at the January board meeting that all of these were partially met in some way, shape, or form, and the only one that was not and which we deliberately chose not to do was that long-range financial planning board pass, which was to the backseat given that we are not, we're not yet in a position to be able to complete that without our litigation.
The one comment we have, one of her feedback was that from a parent that was at the last meeting, is that we talked about how we partially met or we didn't, or we really didn't, or we didn't articulate here how we met it and that we might be officious to give some edits.
Meaning that we go into each of these and we're, we covered that in the last meeting.
Yeah, I feel like we covered that.
We covered that in the last meeting so we'll just make sure that there is very clear in the agenda.
So the break, the meeting that we had in January was an offsite, a five or six-hour planning meeting and we actually covered a variety of topics during that time. But the key outcome was what our 2015 priorities are for the school. And we grouped them into the broad categories and also assigned an allocation of effort and time that we would ideally like to be spending our time collectively as a board. So the seven areas were organizational viability, which we split into discretionary and non-discretionary, academic success, college and career readiness, faithfulness to the charter, innovation and dissemination of best practices, and board development. And within each of those, that organizational viability, non-discretionary, those are the things that we have to do to keep the school running, to keep them up, as far as the legal issues, we have financial issues, that hiring executive directors obviously, we won't do this here. And the accountability plan, which is the plan, now that we have our charter renewal for our next five years, against which the school will be measured. So that is a plan that we need to put in places of board or collectively with the school by August 1st. So those things we have to do, that we estimate at this point, that we'll be spending 20% of our effort on those items. However, those are the things we must do, so that may be 5%, it may be 50%. The second piece that we feel relates to organizational viability is this questionnaire on how we can spend our time was to engage in an effort to engage all of our faculty more directly as a board, so that's a very important for us. And also to think about strategic planning in a much broader sense than we have been able to through our longer-term sort of second decade of AMSA thinking. Academic success and college and career readiness are things that the board needs to monitor but are largely driven by the school's internal, so this is the board effort, not the overall school effort. Faithfulness to charter. One thing that emerged from our meeting on, in January, was that the current vision and mission statement for the school. Well, the current mission statement for the school is confusing for some people, it's confusing for all of us too, because it's not, it's too broad and it isn't specific enough onto what areas to really focus on. And there really isn't a vision that is what we all think of as sort of the really long-term vision for the school. So those are two, two statements that we want to crystallize over the course of this year and involve all of our stakeholders in that effort. We would like to do that as a very big and meaningful effort. The second is to create a strategic plan that sort of falls out of the defined vision of the board.
Can you clarify, there's strategic planning, the bombing, creating a strategic plan, is that the same thing or is it different?
No, it isn't exactly the same thing. Strategic planning is sort of the strategic.
Strategic thinking.
Yeah, it's really more strategic thinking. We wrote it down as strategic planning, but sort of like the strategic thinking behind organizational, behind board development, there's sort of a thing.
Or more long-term thinking.
It's just more long-term and, you know, piecing it together, like really trying to put it over in an overall, maybe thinking about it. And then work out and we continue to improve transparency of facilities, we've made a great deal of effort in the past year, but we'd like to continue to do that. And to ensure that our stakeholders understand what the board will give. So these are all the priorities that we agreed on as board. What we would like to do next is to turn these into goals, the way that the last ones were turned into goals.
I just want to comment for the audience is that these percentages are, is it best practice that we got from a couple of different sources as a way to budget our time? And it's not necessarily that we're saying that that reflects their importance, it's that reflects the amount of time that the board is spending on. And obviously, as Wayne said, it's open to change, we go through.
At this point in time, so.
At this point.
It's like a, it's like a time budget.
It's a time budget, it's a time and effort budget, that's sort of how, as we split out tasks among the board, that's sort of how we're keeping, thinking about what our priorities are. So the next step is actually to turn these actually into goals. We did assign tasks for teams and board members to write goals and those are to run through the governance committee, which was canceled because of the snow, so it will happen in March, governance committee, and then we'll hopefully be able to just come up with a board meeting.
So just to clarify, the goal support fees, it's not that we have a board development goal, we might have a goal that supports transparency, supports strategic planning.
Right, under.
They're not actually, these seven items, there's.
Right, these are just priorities, yeah, whatever the teams come up, we, you know, those actually are. Like, there's probably not going to be a goal for legal because we don't have to. Are there any questions for board members on?
So we're going to defer further discussion on goals.
Right, because we don't have goal.
To the, to the March meeting.
To the March meeting.
I know, I think we talked about coming back and, you know, taking another look at this, we've spent a lot of time brainstorming, but I don't know that we determine that this to the right split or if we just look at it more.
That was the strategic plan, that was the long-term. I think we, but this is a point of discussion, as we recall, but I sadly agree with 2015 that these were.
Do you think the percentages?
I think it's directional at this point. We have to come up, if we have to come up with the smart goals, as we go through the exercise and come and help with the smart goals, that will guide us whether we got these percentages right or not. I think you're out on what we're.
So percentages aren't so meaningful, I mean, we're not going to measure those against percentages at the end of the year, but so the percentages are really just as we think about how we're going to, how we are.
So the March meeting will be the goal to just flesh out.
Fleshing out these goals. But really, it, the fleshing out is going to happen in government.
Okay.
And then governance will roll up as it's up. Are there other questions on that? I mean, it just, a comment, there was also discussion on longer-term strategic priorities beyond these and that a discussion will get rolled up into sort of the create a strategic plan discussion, but we did have discussion on really longer-term beyond sort of. Executive Director selection task force.
That's Ken and I. Do you want me to just look up this? So the executive director selection or search task force, Matt, we had our initial meeting, the, you know, move on process. The first step was to renew the standards that part of the standard present for us as opposed to they, they probably have 24 minutes to review. We have another meeting scheduled to ready for next Monday and Tuesday to rule that list out. So the task force is reading away and preparing their assessment.
Will you be able to provide an update in and of where to be on the process and planning?
I don't think that the process, there's anything different than what Craig said that really.
We just might want to reiterate that. We're following the process, reiterating that we're following the process that was previously outlined.
I mean, we talked about that. I, I mean, we talked about that, but that, that alert went out, I think, last week that said we were formed and we're going to go from twenty-four to six to eight. I, I hope that, you know, maybe we can provide more of an update in the next board. I don't know how often you want the boards to go out, you want them to go out weekly? I mean, if people can, we are, we are actually posting our, our meetings.
Yep.
So people can see that we are in the process and what we're doing. We have two meetings scheduled, the jums are up there, it's very clear where we are and what we're doing.
So just to clarify, we're posting the meetings, but we're reading, but they're all done in executives. People can't, and, but they're open, they're, they're open in the open session, but then they go immediately and they like.
I'm thinking, I like to do a brief, two weeks to this, say, give a brief.
Where you are.
Over here.
I think, I think by the end of next week, we can talk about theirs.
Yeah. Because you'll have, and hopefully be able to say where.
Yeah, at this point, we're not, we don't have much of that information to share, so.
I think what Melissa's saying is, the update is likely to be, we're moving along according to schedule and according to the process they correctly had, and, because we're pretty much following.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
But can you say things like, but if, in case you don't have that process right in front of you, we are now, we're going twenty-four now to six, or seven, do you know what I'm saying? So that it. How about we just put the information that Craig sent out on what this is the process? Is there a schedule?
I still think the ones every two weeks separate enough, because some people are not going to let it go out, went on, went for February break and didn't read the thing ahead of time, just.
I would just, I would just have, like, when they're ready to do, I mean, they're on the time, when they have something to report, which they said could be next week or some, then they should report it. I don't think we should put a timetable, so they need to report, we're following schedule. I mean.
I think we're in violent agreement here, you're suggesting that we need to report out to the community about the progress and what the process is a reminder, and probably do that in the nearer term, and I think, I think we can probably do that at some point. I think Melissa's merely reflecting our view that they're probably not going to be able to.
And that's, if you reassure them here that we are tracking to the point that was about, we're not four weeks behind after being two weeks into it, that would just be reassuring.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's some sense of timing, we're on schedule, the schedule is posted someplace, so we can understand.
Executive Director task force.
We've got another meeting with the union this week, we have three more days down there for future meetings, so.
Is there any sense of when that process might be finished? So there's no sort of, like, we're hoping to be done in a month, or we're hoping to be done in a week, so.
Nope.
We're making good progress. So this year's was really interesting when I was putting this together, in the past I've, this, this, before we come to the governance chair, we've used the same formula a couple of years ago, I know, should we put a first slide? So all thirteen, fourteen, I can show also, probably were provided the questionnaire, and I did get results back from, well, no, maybe I'm wrong. I got results back from everybody except for Ken, who elected Seb, because absolutely just joined for it in, in December. Just a note, because it was obvious to me when I was compiling the results, that actually seven of the people who responded have been on the board less than a year, so the vast, the majority of these were actually new, I'd sort of the first time, which I was looking at, I think it would be. There were fewer comments in general, so again, I, I've captured all the comments that were on there, I've not captured all the comments, I've captured the flavor of all of them, so just to make sure that the sentiment is there, summarized and saluted. So the first one, the board has full and common understanding of its roles and responsibilities. So, oh, this is also, I should say, it's on a five-point scale, one through five, standard like a scale. The average this year is down slightly from last year in that, but not a lot, and it had to do with the fact that there were so many new members. And much of the discussion was that the new members, and some of the old members, too, felt that additional education was needed to get the board up to speak, get the new members up to speak, which is understandable, and these are just various comments that were suggestions that may help with that process. We don't have particularly robust board orientation process, that's something that we've been trying to do, but that's an effort that we need to.
So who, who does the orientation training with that?
We don't really.
No, it says mass, mass charter.
Oh, I see. Actually, can you talk about, can you actually land?
Yes. It's a session, we actually, it was held locally here in Marlboro, and you asked who does it? The acronym, yes.
It was D E S. Yes, D E S, it was Department of Education.
Is that the one that, that actually?
Yes, yes.
Yes. And so it was very good, they talked a lot about best practices, there was an awful lot that was relative to open law, so a legal expert is there.
How do we, how did you find out of them?
They actually came, he came from the board, the board.
Yeah, we get it once a year. That, the overall one happens once a year, and I know other people like Tom has gone to the national one only, they have them.
So they'll have another one coming up that we can all.
Yeah, definitely work well.
It, it works nicely because they really have them in their, in their statewide, but because Marlboro's kind of in the middle of state, they hold them in our house, so it's really convenient for us. And it's like, it was told there.
Yeah.
And it's specific for, it's specific for charter schools, but because of that, some of these sessions, and you get to choose the various different tracks, teach a lot of sort of basic school, yeah.
Like how it starts charter school, I felt like some of them were for people who were in this.
Because many charter schools are not sort of started by people who are from public schools, so they don't know a lot of the public school governance thing. So they teach a lot of sort of public school things, just to get everyone's. But still things like open meeting law for board members. There's still people. Next one. So, board members are passionate and faithful to the school's mission and vision. This also was down a little bit, but actually I would say that this was down not because of the passion, there was acknowledgement by, in all the comments, that the passion, all board members were very passionate about the school's mission, but this did come right off of our annual planning meeting, where we all sort of agreed that the vision, vision and mission need to be further clarified. So it's hard to be faithful, it's not good to it, it's not clear. So that's just a. The board chair is a strong leader of the board, and he's not even here, so I feel that, okay, he's honest, but actually, the remarkable thing is that Craig, has been chair for all three of these years, his score is remarkably consistent. So in general, it's, it's, there is a feeling that people are very pleased with Craig. The structural organization of the board, this is something that we made a lot of progress last year. So this is the committees, various committees, that were actually functioning committees, and the work is being pushed down to committees. We made a big leap between two thousand and three and two thousand, two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fourteen, and our goal was not to backslide in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen this year, which we did not, in fact, many of the new members felt that the structural organization is very clear to them, and that the committee has, they have sort of. Relevant strategic planning is not allowed to stay here. Actually, the amazing thing is that the number wasn't high enough, given that we did not have a lot of time. This has always been an area historically that the board has not, has scored low on our self-assessment, has not had, not been a lot of strategic planning. There has been efforts towards doing annual.
Was relevant realistic to what our expectations to them this year?
Yes, that's right. And then again, the follow-on was clear goals resulting from strategic planning, again, because we didn't do the strategic planning, but there were clear goals resulting from annual planning, and I think that is a big step in a great direction as well. So given that we didn't actually do strategic planning, interesting that both of these went up. So at least all the new members think, know we're thinking about doing strategic planning, and we will get there when we don't have to be immediate, or if we have a chance to. So attending to policy-related decisions, I think this is something that we have continually moved towards to move into a governance role and not in an operational role, so that this is continuing to move in the right direction. Regular reports on finances and programs and other areas, this is something that has always been very strong, that these have always given, kept the board up to date, to make sure that these, that the board is fully informed. Helping set fundraising goals, again, this historically is the probably the lowest scoring metric that we've always had, and we did make a little bit of progress last year as we started to be bored and restart that fundraising development committee, and it did backslide this year, you know, the priorities that we have, and the fact that fundraising was actually deliberately put on board. New members didn't see any evidence of that because it didn't. Effective representation of the board to the community. So the way this question is worded, I think we will need to change going forward because it's not, different people have different interpretations of what community meant. Some people interpreted it as the AMSA community, and other people interpreted it as outreach this, tomorrow, and external to the overall, and others. And so I think that the disconnected some of the comments have to be that bad. But in general, the board has been moving towards being more visible, and I think that many people felt that this was going to continue to happen, given that we actually now have thirteen board members and not six. We'll actually be a lot easier to be outreach as well.
So Pauline, which of the two groups was, was the question really targeted to?
The question was actually targeted to external community, not the AMSA stakeholders, but I think because we've had so much focus on including AMSA stakeholders, that's just how we go with it. But originally, it was for a section while we're. Regularly honored and valued progress towards the goals and product or program performance. So this was interesting because this has two ele, two elements. So the comments reflect, interesting, the charter, I'll, I'll, but there, the progress towards goals is tracked, progress towards sort of products and program performance and school performance isn't tracked so much. It's not something that the board has been spending a lot of time to evaluate that. Regularly evaluated and developed the executive director. So this also reflects a lot of the fact that we are in internal situation right now, that it is in flux. However, there is a process, and we have stuck to it, we have stuck to it with the interim meeting as well, and it's just that we've worked hard and seen it. Each member of the board feels involved in this, in the board's work. Really, I shouldn't even have put a little red arrow down, because this is very high scoring, it is very clear that everybody is very involved in what's going on at this school. All board members are, are on multiple teams and task forces, and everyone's contributing, and, and we see that. I think it's just the way that it was given. All diversity of, the all skilled stakeholders and diversity represented on the board. I put two green arrows here, because I'm so excited, because this number went up so much, but also I think that this is clearly an area, this past year, where the board did really concentrate that. In order to effectively do the job we have to do, we just needed more people, and we needed a different composition on the board, and so there was a lot of effort during the year, and so that was recognized. There is still more to go, the board recruiting hasn't stopped, and there are definitely skill sets that we're looking for still, so that is still not going to happen. We've really been a long project. So summary, there were improvements in a number of areas, I think none of this should be a surprise to anyone, it wasn't all that surprising to me. The, the greatest improvement was obviously skill set, diversity on the board, representation of the community, and surprisingly, strategic planning. But I do think that it largely reflects the fact that we have tried very hard to be thinking longer-term and to be thinking in goals and not sort of in opposition detail. And then, of course, the decreases were various, were things that were just set aside due to immediate priorities, so.
Yeah. I'm wondering, this is, it's really nice, you see, I think it's, it's nice to see that we are reflective as a board. I'm wondering if there's ever, do we ask anyone else to evaluate us on the same questions? Do we ask the parents, or the teachers, or the community, or we just sort of evaluate ourselves?
We, in the surveys, we ask questions, the surveys, well, through, well, in the parent survey and the faculty survey, there are questions about the board.
Is there any sense of sort of correlation, like, do our numbers about how we're doing ourselves, has, has anybody ever looked at, like, the community thinks we're doing this, and we think we're doing this, and sort of where we're tracking, where we think we're getting better, and we think we're getting better.
Not, not quantitatively, and we've never really done it at that level. I think for whenever we reviewed surveys, we'd feel like, are they connected?
Yeah.
So I think that conversation has, has been happening, but we haven't really.
You know, because we've seen some areas of great improvement, I, I hope that other people have seen that as well, and like, it would be interesting to know if they're seeing the same improvement that we think we're doing, or if they're not, like, what we need to do about that.
I have a question to just say.
Yeah, we, I don't think we asked.
Yeah. I think that's a good one.
And maybe the part of the problem is that the sort of community at large doesn't sort of understand the.
Yeah.
I, I have felt in the past, now I know a little bit better about what the board, but I felt when I played in the survey in the past, like, do you know what the board does? And I'm like, mm, I'm big on that.
Yeah.
So maybe if we had the community, if we asked the questions a little bit more specifically, then the, maybe people would have a better sense of what the board does. I don't know, I'm just kind of throwing ideas up.
I think better tracking makes sense, but not a hundred percent tracking, it's for different purposes.
Right, yeah.
This is really our own internal development discussion, which, because we're a public body, we haven't had in public, but it's really, this is just us talking to each other.
Okay.
That said, I do think that it would be nice if we did have a way to have more points of comparison with what we think we're doing, and how others think we're doing other same things.
Were you not here in the spring? I think we had plenty of public comment about how we were doing. I think I have a very good feeling of how we're doing. We had the surveys, and that informed my responses here, so I, I keep it up with current events.
That's true, but we don't have, we could be comparing better than what we're, in a form of.
That's what, that's not what this was about.
That's not what this is about, this is self-assessment.
That's true.
There is any internal self-assessment.
So my other question is that now that we have this data, what do we do, what are the next steps that are positive for the board to go with our actions that we need to take in terms of, as a board, not necessarily, maybe there's governance goals or there's committee goals, or is there anything that we need to take a step back as we look at goals, and are ready to discuss in the next meeting, and see if there's anything else that we need to consider based on what we, how we assess ourselves?
I would, I'd suggest that as the goals are getting put together, the governance committee, they should collect on this document and see if there's something in here that is going to be incorporated in a goal, and we can do that as a check at the, the meeting as well.
Is there, I don't know, maybe there's some governance goal, or governance.
Well, once we do the overall board goals, you know, and the little committee goals, so that would be.
No, I wouldn't suggest that we be easy on ourselves in this regard, but I'm not sure that we should be all that hard on ourselves in this regard. In order for us to, to be probably where we feel that we ideally would be, would require a tremendous amount of work over time. And I think, you know, I mean, just my observation over the past, you know, ten, over the past, you know, over the last year, has been that, you know, the board has shown commitment to try to make progress in the areas, recognizing it's a volunteer board that, you know, meets essentially one per month and so forth, so. I, you know, I agree with Tom, I think we ought to integrate this as we go forward with our goals, sort of take a look at where areas of improvement, you know, where we feel as though we ought to prioritize our time, which goes back to these percentages that we looked at in January, where we prioritize our time towards these, and make progress as we feel it would collectively do. I just, I look at, you know, just listening to your report out here, I was just sort of considering how much time it would take for us, how much. I just, I look at, you know, just listening to your report out here, I was just sort of considering how much time it would take for us and how much effort, how much work it would take for us as a board to, you know, to peg each of these, these goals.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, we have to design them all or we're done.
Yeah. I think that there's recognition that as long as we're moving in the right direction, right, we should, that's what we do.
I just wanted to acknowledge it, you know, sort of explicitly that, you know, the self-assessment is an honest self-assessment. I think it was a good one. And certainly I think that we were praising ourselves with a, you know, with a critical eye. I think we ought to, you know, congratulate ourselves for recognizing where we need to work and we'll take, you know, take effort. And as Tom said, we formulate the goals and we can commit, you know, to dedicate some time to address these if we can.
Pauline, just one last thing for me, I, I think some of us is, we're chemists, but I, it's not uncommon in business, as you know, to have business goals and then a development goal, right? And so you can incorporate it or you can have a second area that's really tied to one or two stretch goals for the board and department. And I think the other piece is, you know, it's missing for me, this is the context of what good looks like, right? So I think one piece is just moving in the right direction. I think another piece, we might come back and go, I'm not sure that we're striving for five on everything, but there could be some that, for some of these, we say we just want an X percent incremental increase. Or we'd like to see, you know, at least half of these at four or above. So we might want to spend some time in the future thinking about what is, what does good look like? So we report out, not only in the context of we're moving up, but we've got to target that.
There is a board development goal or priority, right? That was one of those.
Right.
Whoever's writing that board development.
Should be a line.
Yeah, it should be a line.
The Yalta's Alki, they want.
We're in the small, no.
Yeah, okay.
It's dumb, I think, go through the whole. All right. Are there any other questions? Yeah, if there are no questions on that, let's read forward on the third party survey options.
So let's keep a quick update. I tasked them to reach out to a few different components for the next slide. Third party survey options and review and evaluate what they could offer and some of the parameters, some of the things I was looking at with the specific types of tools and ensuring that we can survey parents, students and staff. I wanted to understand if there was customization availability and if there was benchmark data that we can also look at, that we have based on the number of schools that they work with. And also for us to look at year-over-year benchmark data. So basically, we'll, there's only really one slide, but really the next step or the required action for the board is determine what we want to do next. Do we want to bring people in to evaluate? Do we want to move this to a cap, a committee to drive? Do we think that the administration can drive it or can we make a decision today? Because the next slide, like I said, I evaluated three. So initially I was only looking at two, Panorama Education and Institute of Excellence in Ethics. And throughout the process, I found that the government is actually creating a solution as well. So we'll start with Panorama, who is a foster organization that specializes in school surveys. They currently serve over six thousand schools, 1.8 million and forty students across 26 states, lots of, a lot of benchmark data there. They have three different survey tools. One is, you know, social emotional mentoring growth mindset, another one is the student survey of faculty, and another one is the staff, parent, staff, right? Student, parent, staff credit survey. So you basically license out their solution, it's like a $4,000 a year. They come in, they do all the setup and to provide the solution to you. And you can use any of these surveys, you can send them as many, many times a year as you want. So it's, it's pretty robust and they continue to grow and expand.
Do they give administration?
Excuse me?
Do they do it?
I believe that you build it and you let them know when you want to actually do this. And they will actually provide you a report. I have a page here that shows you the different types of reports. It really depends on what we're trying to do. If it's a student survey of faculty, I don't think that's really, I don't know if that's driven by us. So we would have to discuss which one of these tools we really want to use from them. And they're more than happy to come in and demo.
So this one is not customizable or?
It is customizable. So customization is available during setup, year-over-year benchmark data is available. They're currently rolling out the nationwide benchmark data tools. All data is anonymous and activated into a P D A. The second one, which I was really hopeful, which was one of the ones that I had presented for the first time, they, I think they scaled this back. They only really currently serve three to four districts. It's more of like a one-off. They've served many schools in the past, but I think a lot of, a lot of districts are using this for a one-time survey. They don't have, they have, you can have your own benchmark data, but nationwide benchmarks aren't available and customization is no longer available. And it was the office manager who called me back, so I was very sorry.
Circling my group.
But you're more than welcome to look at additional information. So.
There's your lights on the way out.
Yeah.
That's why you went to option three.
You know, and then I came across the government is creating their own survey platform. They are currently rolling out a pilot next week with 50 schools, 25 middle school and 25 high schools. It's going to be free. It's going to be offered in 500 schools by 2016 to create, you know, some benchmark data. I think it might be something that more schools will be using, so the benchmark data might be a little bit robust as we look forward. So I, I don't have information, enough information right now because, again, they're having a webinar next week. She said that she will send me the links as soon as they're available and I think I can share a little bit more at the March meeting. My preference was to go to Panorama, but if, if this is coming out very quickly and soon, we might want to look at it as an option. I need to understand the, how it works and kind of look at some of the reporting that they have and make sure that it's going to be there because all they really had to date is P D A. But she can share and I talked to her very briefly on the phone.
Is there customization?
She said that you could customize. Again, you know, it was kind of, it was more, it was a little bit wishy-washy because it was in itself. So they're, it's not final. They're piloting it to see what needs to be updated, what needs to be changed. Too bad you couldn't have piloted with them and that's what I, it's like, oh, so are you still looking for people? But it's already in process. I just think that, you know, if it's a tool that we envision that more, more schools are going to be using in the future, it might be a better tool for us to look at in the long term. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to rush us to go to Panorama, but we still might want to have, you know, take the opportunity and see the demo. I didn't want to do it by myself if there were other board members that would be interested in doing it. Just a question, this, this first one, is that a fixed question or can you kind of go a la carte if you're not interested in all of it except for, but use one or another? So you can go to the next slide, Tom. So I just took snapshots of their recording and what's really, was really nice is they tell you how to read your report. They give you some information and then there's like summary report and then the details. So this is, this I believe is a student survey, report of a faculty member. And this is the report that the faculty usually get about how they were surveyed within their class and on certain things. And then the next one is the, if you go one more time, that would be the last one. This is the other institute that is much more smaller, I wanted to share. It is interesting how they look at things and I really like how they connect with the medical education, but I don't know that I'm very soon to pass. They're probably getting ready to shut the lights off. That's it, I want to share where I was with that. I don't know how the board would like to move forward if we want to wait until more to see the other solution, if we want to tack it to.
The other solution is a, what?
No, the, the government.
So we have to just wait.
Yeah.
I think we should talk about the value to the survey right now as well.
I don't know that we were ready to do a survey right now. I mean, I was really looking to find a solution that maybe we can do it in May or June.
Yeah, I thought we were, is that what we were talking, that's kind of what we tend to do in the, in May, June?
Well, to get it stayed shut, we need to.
More to get, we can do it later.
And Panorama takes weeks. It's not like you could tell them to go tomorrow. It will take four or five months.
Do you know anything about the, a couple of comments. One is, so the government has not had such great luck with websites lately. Well, two, I have never seen a software project come in on time. And they're supposed to be ready for prime time in September of 2015, so I think that's unlikely. Which leads to my question is, for the first option, can we export that data? We got another product two years from now.
Okay, but it won't be, it won't be out of the apples because the questions in Panorama are not going to be the questions for another survey. So.
Will we put a different customization label on it?
Well, you could add questions, you could include blood questions, I don't think they're great. One of the goals of this is that we don't have to create our own.
We lose the benchmark. You can't mention the other school.
I don't, I don't know, I mean, when, when I asked them about customization, it was more about, you know, we're a charter school, we're different. You might have some additional questions and, you know, he sent me over to the charter school, the business development person, and they support charter schools in the area. So they have, they do have some questions that they can help, that they've already done. So Panorama, I think, would be a very easy group to work with. They know what they're doing, they're optimistic, they do it, you know, they do it for a lot of schools.
They have, but they also have a statement specific for charter schools?
They have a business development person that was willing to talk. So I talked to two people there and the business development person for charter schools actually reached out to me separately to see.
Excuse me, if we could, if it would result in benchmarking, not just schools in general, but if we could get specifically charter school benchmarking, so we could dive a little bit.
I think the next step would be if we're interested in having Panorama come and present to us, we should set up a time to present to the whole board to ask for questions. And, and he, he said, you know, if you can't trust me, you can do it as a, for us. But I don't want, I'm not the sole decision maker, I just wanted to provide the information to the board. So it's really my pleasure.
I don't see what it hurt bringing them in.
So I'm surprised that the market is that thin, you know, that you look, look, and look in this world. Because I think there's really, that's really the only viable candidate. On the other hand, I think having them is great and I think $4,000, do it for a year or two and see what we learn and see what we like. Not that expensive. It's, it's going to be at least as good as what we've done ourselves without the downsides that we're trying to avoid. The thing I noticed about this is the benchmarking. So the issue to me on number three is not Chris's comment, although I, I agree with him that there were a lot of software projects that tends to, you know, to take longer. My concern is more about the sustainment of that effort over, along the time. And, you know, a company whose business it is to do this is more likely to sustain this effort, continue to collect the benchmark data and continue to be a useful product over longer time. You know, number three, I appreciate, you know, I appreciate its cost certainly, but, you know, unless you have, unless you have benchmark data, then I, I just think it is going to be limited beautifully.
Right, and.
I would certainly agree with Scott and, and to me, it seems like, you know, let's bring them in, let's, you know, talk to them, let's see what's what.
So you just need to show me when and how to do it.
I like it. I, I did, I think we should try to do, try to target markets if we can there at all.
Markboard.
Do we need to have a, the markboard?
Let's do U R O, if that's Panorama ahead, is it?
Yes.
We could do a tech workshop.
Maybe more.
Melissa, I can do it, we don't have to.
Another option. I don't want to do the, withdraw that option.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it makes sense to, to have any of our.
You know, even before, even before we, before we do it for the, I think having them come in, we probably learned a lot more about the things that we might want to.
How long is their demo?
I think we can ask them to, as quickly as we need, I don't think they're available.
Thirty minutes, I mean, because my concern, for the full board, thirty minutes is a lot. Yeah, for the full board.
But Ken's point, I think, is learning about it.
How about this, I got an idea. If we invited them in, we could have a pre-meeting for those who, those of the board who were interested.
Oh, how about a minute, five thirty?
Five minute, five thirty, six o'clock, and then have them have fifteen minutes maximum in the board meeting to do the summary presentation.
Then we don't even really need to have it.
I just thought it, just like, for those, for ourselves and the audience to get an exposure to it, since they're there already.
They come at five thirty?
Yeah, you could do that. You could do it that way as well.
Do you want to start the next board meeting early for the presentation? Let me reach out to him and see if it's, if it's possible. And if it is, I'll let you know so that it can be incorporated into that.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's, it's like.
It's not a board meeting, it's like a pre, it would be sort of a pre-board.
Separate, separate meeting.
It would be a task force meeting that opened.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, open, without like a task force.
Let me tell. I mean, if he's willing to do it as a webinar, then we could just set it up during the week as conference call and you.
I would.
And you'll be.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, we could do that, then we could just set it up at a time.
Let me see what the options are and then I will send out a note and he can let me know if they're interested in participating.
Okay, yeah.
And then we don't have to come back to the school.
Right, and then we can talk about it on the task force and how.
We're allowed to do that.
Informational, yeah.
Information, we're not, we're not deliberate.
Well, it's just to get more information that's in the webinar. Do you know quickly about, when you talk about customization, is that adding questions? Are there other customizations?
We can incorporate custom questions, that's what I wrote down.
So that's customization for that, right?
Yep, right. Their website, there's a plethora of information, I mean, I'm sure that it, and there's, there's your own, there's webinars and things there too. And I looked at it a while ago. I began, I had these conversations, I think, in January. I just, we had a January meeting, obviously. So I would, I would urge you all to first, open their website and then put a demo in it and that, they only have fifteen minutes, how much they need, need a presentation, we all have essential time.
Yeah, so I think if we do that as a webinar, that information, then we can talk about it at the next board meeting.
We, we have lost all the time.
Oh, we lost all the time, we didn't, all right. It was.
I follow that.
Fifty minutes.
All right. But we're finally done, Chair, because we're moving on to the task force.
Well, fifteen minutes time made up.
That's right, and I have Rick's notes.
So the sort of approach that I'm getting to is to think about some of the things that were identified earlier in the year and different categories that exist. And then from that, kind of report what we're doing as an administrative team and then additionally, of course, we probably report on, on all the boards addressing some of their. So with that in mind, so under the, one of the categories was organizational design. So some of the things that we've been working on, you know, since the report came out is job description, roles and responsibilities. We sent out to all of the administrators and support staff to identify what their responsibilities that they're working on. So they try to do like an inventory from that. We're going to create a chart of responsibilities, take a look at what people are doing, see if it's appropriate to their jobs, see whether there's redundancy and so on. From that, we'll create new job descriptions and new organizational chart. Which I believe is also a part of one of the things in the chartering deal is for us to have some of that. So that's something we're working on. Under hiring practices, we put bulletin boards up in staff lounges and now post positions and everything's up there we can see. And we've had tradings going on, additional H R tradings for administrators and expanded networking, networking, H R. See, we have a box that's going to help us with, you know, with current updates and changes and laws and regulations. Next category, those are just whole slides. In culture and the, and the work environment. In culture and the, and the work environment, cultural development, we've got the professionals about workshops, starting off twelve, twelve days to current times. We've done for cultural proficiency in terms of goal perspectives, but also in culture and understanding, getting to know one another better. We did start, we had to hold off because of the weather, but we were starting sessions where we're starting to talk about values and bringing people together to have a greater voice. And with all the disruption, we've put a hole on that, but we'll be coming back to those sessions for teachers. There's just other kinds of things. We're doing monthly staff socials. In fact, today we had ours on. It was celebrating the Chinese New Year. We've had Thanksgiving celebrations. We've had a holiday theme. We've had Indian teas. And so we're just trying to have different things that can bring staff together to enjoy one another's company. Incorporating morning music, just little things, anything we can do to try to help to give it a feel to the, to the school. If educators share best practices, if you attend a professional development, a conference, the expectation is that we invested in you to go do that, but then you come back and you share best practices with your department, some of the things that you admire. We're also trying to increase the types of professional development opportunities that folks have. We've had teachers out to visit other schools, school visits. We have people going to national and regional conferences. And we've partnered with Primary Source, which is a, a, a global education organization in Ottawa, Canada.
How do we measure success, like the cultural, culture development?
Well, those are things that we're, we'll be doing survey in the spring. That was part of, some of my goals of how we would do that. So we'll be assessing that by asking people, including things like professional development. Do you feel that you're getting more opportunities for professional development? So those will be covered in the survey.
Dr. D'Amillo, just thinking on the last one, sharing of best practices. Is there any type of repository that's in place? Thinking of, for example, when new teachers come on board, they haven't had the chance to sit in that session and the best practices shared, something that they can go back to, that's archival, they can look and sort of learn what those best practices were.
Yeah, it's a great idea. I don't think we have anything quite like that set, setup. We do have Atlas, which stores all of our curriculum. So if it's a new lesson or something that someone puts in, that can be uploaded so that they have access to, you know, lessons and to practices that are, that are happening. But generally, people are coming back, and, you know, the departments do this on a pretty regular basis, where they just come back and they share anecdotal with what's happening. So it's kind of an ongoing thing. And, and the idea is that as everybody becomes more proficient and professional with their practice, that our mentoring program helps to support, you know, teachers who come in as everybody gets assigned a mentor when they, when they start. So I'm hoping that that's an ongoing collaboration. But I think if there are certain practices, you make a great point, that we should make a better effort at documenting it in, in Atlas. So it's stored.
Take a few notes and just, you know, store them in the...
Yeah. Thank you. Under culture and work environment, just a couple of things, you know, we started the year, because again, this, this report's kind of documented from the start of the year. So we started by expanding staff lounge, we increased lobby space. Most recently, we enlarged the health and nurse office areas. And made more and more students. Under communication, we have a, a new questions page on our website that I want folks to be aware of. If you go on our website, under the different tabs, there's one that's contact us. You go to contact us, and you hold down that tab, there's a staff directory there and so on. But there's also a new one that's questions, and start here. And so we've added that page with the idea that one of the, the concerns that was sort of pretty loud was, you know, who do I contact for this, and I don't know who to go to. So we've listed a variety of categories of sort of start questions. And so it's the categories, and then the people who you contact, the email link, you just touch on it, click on it, and it links to it. And then a third column that provides their title, so you understand who it is you're contacting and what their role is. So we're hoping that that will be just that, a good starting point for people, so that they can identify where the best place is to go with your information. When did that, when did that go up? Uh, well, I'm not sure. I put, probably right before the vacation party, I think, I put it up. So we're going to send, once we've announced it now, we're going to send alert out to parents so that they're aware of that. Also, we're trying to be, have been trying to be very mindful of, of sending regular alerts, and we need to alert some of the parents, but again, trying to find a balance between being informative and not sending so much that people start to tune out what's going home. We mentioned already tonight that we're moving to Google Apps, so I'll move over that. Other internal things we've done, we've updated field trip forms so that they're more informative, where you make sure that folks are going through, want to run a field trip, are going through very specific steps, especially in regard to overnight field trips. We've put in some new requirements, that at least one person has to be certified in CPR for an overnight. We have medical forms, normalized medical forms now. We have nursing sign off for every field trip now that's going out. We have a free explanation of accommodations, travel expectations. So these are some things that we've tried to put in to improve our, our communication and to make sure that we're, make sure we're all staying consistent.
Does this, does this have any public consequences?
Uh, no, I don't believe anything does. It's really all internal procedural kinds of things that we put in place. Also, in particular, for example, under field trips, that when information's coming to me to sign off and approve a field trip, or a principal event to the ED when that comes in play, that we know that all these things are taken care of, that we have some standardization so that the mechanism when you run a trip is not different from there. And, and, and that the person making the decisions for approval have all the information ahead of time. So it also helps to expedite the process. Management, one of the suggestions under the categories was around frequency of meetings. I meet every Monday morning with the central office team to kind of get an update for what happened last week that we might need to address, and what are the upcoming things we need to do. I also meet at least once every eight day cycle, but sometimes more as needed, with the department chairs, so that we're all staying on top of things as much as possible. Under work processes and accountability, we've implemented some interview process standards. For example, now we institute confidentiality forms and advise people who are doing interview processes about do's and don'ts, kinds of questions that are appropriate to ask and not appropriate to ask during interviews. We've implemented these during search committee protocols. Also, for engaging staff more under this category, the educator evaluation, I'm not sure what folks are familiar with, but there's a rubric for that. And so we went out to, to the staff and department meetings, and so there's over thirty elements that educators are evaluated on, but we wanted to, you know, try to bring a focus to that for this year. So we are looking at focusing primarily on ten of the elements, and we asked that the teaching staff select five of the elements, and administrators selected five of the elements. So we felt that it would be a little bit more collaborative on what we felt the focus needed to be for, for evaluation for the year. And, and we've started some conversations with staff around values. Again, part of that was interrupted by the snow days, and due to all the disruption, we didn't want to carry on with that, but we will be getting back to that because it's meaningful, meaningful information. And I feel it's going to be the foundation to, for when the committee, the board is ready to start strategic planning, you'll have a sense of what are some of the values that the educators in the school are bringing forward. So I think that's going to be a form of start.
The educator evaluation, five, five, is that done?
Have we done that?
Yeah.
Yeah, everything that's completed are things that we've completed. So these categories that you see across the top, at each board meeting, will be reoccurring categories. So as we address new things in the categories, you'll, you'll see that here. So that's not that the educator evaluation has happened.
I understand.
Well, the educator, educator evaluation is an ongoing thing all the time, but the five, the ten. But when we, yeah, back in the fall, we went through the process of, instead of trying to tackle everything at one time, we wanted to try to chunk it, because we've got a lot obviously going on this year. We thought that would help people to focus on, on some things. And it's across the four, there are four standards. It's across the four standards. And next. And then finally, under the category of technology. So I'm happy to say, I think I reported earlier in the year, that we sent a group, a team of over twenty people to the Massachusetts Computer Using Educators Conference, which is a rather large state conference at Gillette Stadium. It's a collaboration between the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and, and Massachusetts Computer Using Educators Organization. And, and in doing so, we ended up being the second highest group that attended. We felt good about that, and I, I knew you received a report after that from, from some of the attendees. We are adding, again, the Google Apps as an addition, and email. We've also increased our number of access points. See if there's, Arrow Hive up there. We added several above the ceiling, starting, right?
Oh, well, thank you.
So we're adding access points in our, in our buildings, and, and we've added, particularly in the White Building, which we're happy about because that's leading us to be able to do a pilot iPad program, which just actually kicked off today. So we're happy about, about starting that. And, and journalism program for, you may have noticed, I hope, if you check on the homepage again, there's a link for Answer Voice. And, and so we, we added a new platform for them to be able to have sort of a more professional journalism reporting platform this year. So those are some things that we've done in the area of technology.
Quick question. When you say pilot iPad program, briefly, what, what do you mean by that?
Sure. So we had some interest in wanting to think about what would happen with some of the one-to-one kinds of initiative, and we had an interest around the iPads. At, at first, it started out as, well, we have a, a teacher or two who are going to maybe take a look at, and I said, well, we don't want to use one period for a class and then not for others. So what we now have is several teachers who are on a rotating basis, who are using, going to be using iPads and trying to experiment a little bit and explore. It's a, it's a missing, it's another thing that I heard when I came on board. In fact, it was also heard, the recommendation was to at least have some laptop parts. We really don't have much in that, in that way. And although we have manned computer labs that are used for our computer science, when it comes to, say, an English teacher wanting to do something for writing, or a history teacher wanting to have students research primary sources for things, we're falling a little bit short there. So this is designed to, to address that. And I'm hoping I'll be able to do some reporting on the success next month and what we're finding early on, but it really, literally just kicked off today.
Is it, students use an iPad or teachers use an iPad?
No, it's, it's, it's a, it's a classroom set so that, well, it's going to be shared, but it's so that students are using iPads and the teachers are, you know, so again, it's like the start of a, of a one-to-one and trying to see. And I just want to, I want people to know this is in no way directing that it would mean, oh, if we went to a one-to-one, because that's not a decision we made. But if we went to one-to-one, that it would be iPads or anything else. It was literally, this is a start, it's something to explore, and, and that's, that's it. We may try to explore down the road, for example, a pro board, because part of running the pilots gives you a sense of what's going to be the best fit for this district. Because you, every district is different, you know, how it works. But it's a start, and it's something that you can get excited about.
Want to, want to process or actually?
I think it's going to be all day long. It's going to be an eight-way rotation.
So eight?
One.
Eight. One, one group of eight. One.
It's a variety of courses.
One set, sorry. There's one set of iPads.
Oh, yes, a set of iPads, yes. That is rotating regularly throughout all of the classes throughout the day. And that's why it's in, right now, it's just in the White Building. It was easiest to move them about without any problems, one level.
So it's in an upper school?
Uh, well, it's in the White Building, so it may be different grades.
Oh, it's different.
Yeah.
So it's across, it's across different departments?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Different grades.
Yeah. The board's interested, I can have, when I report next month, I'll have to break out of that, maybe have a teacher or two come in to let you know how that's going. Actually, we're not in the White Building anymore. Sheers. Well, there's, there's the grant, you know. The innovation grant, just want to say. I think that's everything, right? That's the end. Can I end at that Answer Voice online? If you haven't gotten to see it, it's fantastic. It is actually fantastic. It's better writing than most of the community knows of. It's really good. Yes, they actually, our accurate, but yeah.
So, update the board.
Yeah, so from the board. Actually, before we're done with this, are, do you have, is there sort of a, the to-do still? I mean, how much do you have? Yeah. Well, it will be ongoing. And so the, the matrix is sort of internal for now, and that's helping us to map out internally how we're making progress. But the idea is that every month, when I do an ED before, I will, in these categories that you see listed, as we accomplish things or we get something up and started, we'll report on it. So for example, you just got an introduction tonight to the job description part, right? We're starting that process, we're starting to do chart things. There'll be updates.
It might be helpful to say, you know, we, we have identified items and we actually completed.
So the discussion at the task force level was actually to not do it that way, to not do it against, you know, we have, we have a hundred, we have thirty-five done, but simply to make the point that we're continuing to work at it as we, as we accomplish things and share them. Because the, if you remember that list, it just, it wouldn't work very well then. And, you know, we, what we agreed to was that we wanted to make sure that we're keeping our eye on the ball, and that we're continuing to move forward, and focusing on what we were doing, and not what we weren't doing.
The only thing I might just add is that if you would go through that list, you'd realize that so many, a lot of things cross over. So for example, there's something that may come under leadership training, under one category of organization, also comes under professional development, and what we're doing for there, which also can come under engagement of people. So a lot of them, it's easier, I think, if you just chunk it in categories, and then what are we doing to address those, those things in the different categories. But the important thing is, is to, at the end of the year, my goal, that's why that matrix is such, sort of internally, is that I know we ticked off all of those in some manner.
And your goals are full of, in May, seventy-five percent of teachers will report that.
My, yes, my, my individual goals are, that will be then measured, they're all almost marked.
Dr. D'Amillo, do you collaborate on, say, one or two, what you think are the most important, next things to add to your to-do list? If you had to pick, like...
Well, I'm going, culture. I mean, I can't even blink on that one. It's just ongoing culture is really important. And I would say the other one that's, that's really important is getting a really good handle on the job responsibilities, the descriptions, and charting out, being sure about responsibilities so that we are operating in the most efficient way that we can. And because it's also tied to the charter renewal, I think that's another important aspect to have, to have qualified. And it goes with, again, some of the feedback that people gave, who do I go to for this? What are the responsibilities here? So I would say the ongoing culture and the job responsibilities organizational chart and job descriptions kind of all bundled together.
So for the board and shared goals that we have progress to report on, was establish regular roundtable with parents and teachers. We guys know today on that, but they're resuming on March 10. Posting board trustee responsibilities, consider a video, definitely have an FAQ. A lot of the questions we posted, more items to be added. So we have made FDI's, and we have included responsibilities in an FAQ on the website. Third, progress survey mechanism, some of this is really doing all the work.
She's not even on your task force.
I know, I was going to say.
The website update.
The task force is very good at delegating.
An effort to have a quicker turnaround time on complaints, we're trying, you know, so we're continuing to work at it. And posting progress on these items during or directly for board trustee meeting and on the website is another work in progress. So I'm pointing that, and I don't know where we are in terms of posting on the website. One question to share with Mary Ashley too, one is, one of the things we discussed was defining the escalation process for when people have issues. And where that is really a, in a normal world, that would be an administrative function and not a board function, but because that issue was so important, and all of the, you know, and all the suffering of the last year, that we wanted to be together on that. So can you talk a little bit about where, where are we in terms of having that process focused on?
For the, well, for the parents, what we've done, is that we're there, right?
Well, one thing about teachers, you know, faculty and staff.
For faculty and staff, I think we've kind of, I feel like we've covered it. I mean, I'm not sure, I feel like it's still missing, it's something that we've done through just conversations. Is it written down somewhere? No. I don't think it's written down anywhere. I don't think it's written down anywhere.
So I think if we could do that, actually, I think it's, it may be written down in the way how, or different.
Well, I guess the question would be for what kinds of things? I mean, generally, anything they would go to their department head.
That's right. And if that doesn't work, then they go to the principal, that doesn't work, they go to you. And then there's a procedure, if they don't feel safe going to you, they go to Nancy, and that comes to us. Where are those steps written down? Or if they're not coming to that?
Do you know, is that?
What it regards to?
Well, I can't, no, see, that's what I'm, excuse me, that's what I'm trying to think about.
If it's a?
Is how to report it that way and whether or not it's in a way, and maybe you can help answer this question just, is that something that is not clear to people, they would go to their department head and then the principal and then, because it's?
I think, I think it is clear to people if it's a normal sort of thing, but I think that when, I think that what the sticking point is, is if you don't, if your issue doesn't quite fit this cookie cutter, like, it's, the process is clear for, like, regular stuff, but I think what happened in the past year is stuff came up that wasn't, that sort of didn't fit that model, and then what happens then? And I think that that part is still unclear. And maybe because fewer weird things have happened, people haven't gone looking for it, which that's the sign I would think, but I think that the staff would feel better if that was.
Well, it's also something that, you know, as a task force and a board, we're committed to.
Yeah.
And that is, if we can recite it, we should be able to write it down.
Okay.
And I know, and it's very parallel to, I know, like, the whistle cord, you know, you see something going on that shouldn't be. It's a similar set of steps. You go through the chain of command, and then there's a safety valve, if you don't feel safe doing that, and eventually escalate, so I think.
Well, I think we talked about here, the only exception that I can think of is if it has to do with an executive director. I think all the other steps go up that regular chain, but we'll put it, we'll put it right now.
Actually, whatever level of formality it is today is where it should stay today, because this would be part of something that would be going far in trying to change the escalation process. So we should not change current brackets at this point in time.
I don't, I don't, I don't, just like writing down the current brackets.
I think we have it documented in one of the panels with the actual, what the procedure is, but what Tom and I are saying, since it's part of the discussions that we're engaged in, we just want to maintain the status quo for the moment. We hear what's wrong, but.
So is the status quo written down?
I think it is in one of those.
Okay, so you say it is, Mary Ann, so it's not?
Well, no, I honestly don't know.
Is it on the website?
Nancy, but it's, I guess, again, if you're talking about harassment, discrimination, it's written down. Yeah, see, that's the thing, what it's, like, if it's a harassment situation, right? That's, that's in the, in the, that's a personnel matter, that has to be. If it's a civil rights violation, that's in there. If you're talking about an evaluation, well, that's part of the evaluation process, you go to your evaluator, and then goes up, those, I think, those are just, I'm not saying really intuitive, but I'm missing that, I mean, that.
So can we just request that, maybe, the ED, a look at those two?
Books, because I, I know we read a lot of handbooks over the summer, but I feel like it's part of one of the things, too.
You know what might be helpful, Tom, maybe this will work, Chris, is we'll take a couple of different categories, like if it's a harassment thing, it's a civil rights, and we'll, we'll make it clear, and it will, it will just be a reiteration of what's in the handbook, and we can put it on our internal website for our teachers and staff to make sure that they can access.
I do have.
If there's something that needs clarity there.
Yeah.
In terms of the parents, if I can quickly mention though, on this new Ask, contact us and the questions start here. We did write, follow chart is designed to assist you in directing your questions to the appropriate personnel. As always, questions or concerns may be brought to the attention of assistant principal, principal or executive director, but please begin at these initial reporting levels to increase efficiency and expedite responses, and I hope this will be helpful. So that, I think, will help guide you there. And then, yeah, and then there's a whole chart with all categories.
Great. And then something that we talked about a couple of months ago was the whole, the Let's Talk technology, which ended up being very disappointing when we actually got to look at it. But the last time we discussed it, there was a question of, so what instead of that?
Or two.
Any news on that?
Yeah. Well, we were hopeful that this chart would be helpful for folks to know where to go to, but we haven't found a software program, if that's still what's, what's needed, but the ones that we checked out, we've seen failed for accomplishing what they were meant to accomplish.
Yeah.
My hope is that this, this chart directs people as to who to go to to help us in conversations.
Okay. And I think what we should do is agree that that's kind of, that that one's dead now. It's sort of like, there is no software that does what we were told Let's Talk would do.
No, what that, what that perception was, was not at all.
And there's nothing out there, so we can stop looking for it.
Not that does what was being described as what we were looking for. But what we want people to do is, is to have a direct conversation. If you have a concern, talk to the people that are in charge of that, and then you've listed what are the steps to take if, you know, you don't get the answers you need there, then you, through the, through the chain, as I just read it. But I think when you get a chance to take a look at this list, it's pretty specific. I mean, there's probably thirty categories.
Yeah, I have it written out. Wow, this is fantastic.
For folks, so.
I'm glad we looked at it off-line.
So here's a question.
So we can check Let's Talk off the list, yes.
Yeah.
Let's talk off. If someone has a question, I'm just trying to think of like a way out there, you know, not fitting in a clear category, because, you know, obviously it's helpful if you go to there. What about, someone has a question about location of their kid's homeroom relative to their welcome?
Homeroom teacher?
Yeah.
Were they tried?
Well, unless they. Well, she was just trying to bring something, trying to figure out what kind of. But I think the point is, is that what we've tried to do is, and again, if you get a chance to look at this list, but it's, it's pretty extensive for categories, and, you know, when all else fails, if it doesn't fit one of these, pick up the phone, call the school, tell the receptionist, here's what I'm looking for, who can, who can you direct my call to? And, and there's always, you know, the principal, the assistant principal, or D, always, always. But that's what we're trying to encourage, call. You know, ask, don't, don't ask other people, ask the people. That's why we've also tried to trim down with the website and these other kinds of sites that work, which I know is upsetting for some people, but misinformation, it's like, we want to direct people to our website, to our Facebook pages, to our people so that we know what information they're receiving is exactly what it is.
Would it be helpful if, from a faculty perspective, if I came back with, these are some of the areas where faculty would like more clarity, like in these situations, or do you not want me to touch that?
I think what would be helpful is if you brought that to me, and then we can create, if we need clarity, we can create something to do that, and then I can report it up to the board.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We are over a little, but not way off. So Finance and Audit Committee, monthly update, attendance.
You know I can talk that far.
Yeah.
Now we're doing two, but we will be quick here. Right here, this column right here is month to date. This column right here is through January. We're going to focus mostly on this column right here, or on the point out right there. We are in tuition on a monthly basis now, highlighting that for people there. Our tuition is about a hundred and three percent of what we have budgeted. It is at a hundred and one point seven percent of where it was last year, i.e., we've got a one point seven percent increase in tuition. That's important for people to understand. Our tuition is by far the vast source of, you know, revenue that we get, and it's not controllable by us. I can't cancel the Fourth of July parade and reallocate those monies to the school budget, and that's not an option. I can't go back to taxpayers in the town and ask for an override for an increase in the property tax. Our tuition is formulaic driven, it's based on the number of students that we have, nine sixty-six. Can't, can't change the number of students, that's part of the charter. So whatever we get from the state is what we get from the state, and so we're getting one point seven percent more this year than we were getting last year. We budgeted conservatively, that's why we are ahead of the budget, but that's important to understand, that number.
But the one point seven percent, do you know if that's because you're getting more or it's just that our demographics shifted because there are more people in the upper schools?
No, it's because that, because all of the towns increased their tax rates and that flows to us.
Just happened to be, that those towns.
There is certainly some of it, some of it is related to, you know, the shift between the lower school and the upper school, but the majority of that has been driven by that the taxes have gone up for people in our four towns by essentially one point seven percent.
But Marlboro taxes don't go up next year, then all our Marlboro students.
It's the same.
Whatever it is.
It is what it is. So we have no control over that that year there. But we do have control, but really, the only thing that we have control over here is our grants, and most of our grants are actually entitled grants that we get.
Correct.
We didn't get one of the entitled grants that we've gotten in the past. The good news, the bad news, the way to look at that is that grant is driven off the number of needy people's, you know, free reduced lunch books that we have, and our population in that area has actually gone down. We didn't qualify for that grant, but that was a grant that we were getting this year. The, you know, so entitled grants are the, entitled grants are the biggest piece of this, like, the point that's not cooperated with the main. The part that we can really control is our fundraising piece. And we budgeted for forty thousand dollars of fundraising, we haven't had fundraising this year. We have had grants come in, little annual giving come in, but obviously we're, you know, we're behind on that call. Miscellaneous side of the house, that's just interest, it's point two percent is what, you know, is what that part of the budget is. So the fact that it's a hundred and twenty percent over budget doesn't amount to a hell of things, because it's fourteen thousand dollars is what we're talking about there. The next several line items, which you're going to see, you're going to see these line items repeated downhill up, these are essentially pastries. Nutrition, we charge for the school lunches, we pay for the school lunches. Student programs, we charge for student activities, and then we administer those student activities. Athletics, we charge for the athletics, we pay for the athletics. And then this student transportation line relates to our regional busing is what it relates to. Right now, we're projecting that we're going to collect approximately a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in fees for the regional buses, that's substantially down from what we had budgeted, a twenty thousand dollars down from what we had budgeted and what we were projecting. We have less people riding the bus and/or we have a different mix of the people that are riding the bus, they all live closer in the, you know, the towns which have the lower rate. We're going to have to reexamine how much we're charging for the regional buses. We also have an RFP outstanding at this point for the busing contract. That covers all the busing, not just the regional busing, but the buses that the school uses to get people to athletic events and field trips and things like that. We rebid that entire contract, the biggest piece of that contract, though, obviously, is the regional buses at this point in time. So if you remember those things, if you remember nutrition, you remember student programs, athletic programs, and transportation, you're going to see those all downhill up, as we go downhill.
So, Tom, the, the RFP that we have out, when, when will it start?
I think the responses are due in March is when it's, but not until March twenty, if I want to say. So we're not going to have that information then at March, or meaning, and we don't have to, you know, we don't run the busing program, but what we're going to intend to do is we're going to need to look at and raise it. Either we're going to have to hope that you get these RFPs back and the cost of buses goes down, or we're going to have to be asking people to pay more for buses as well, as we're going to keep it down.
Does the board have to vote to approve the conference, or is that?
That's just driven to the administration. They're complying with the procurement, you know, the state procurement policies, that's driven by administration. On the salary side of the house, obviously salaries, payroll taxes, bringing benefits, medical expenses and things, medical insurance, things like that are single biggest expenses out there. We're at ninety-seven percent of what we have budgeted. We have a couple unfilled physicians at this point in time. We didn't hire a professional in special A area because we didn't have as many special A students as we were expecting. We had budgeted for an IT director, currently they are in the PELT IT director at this point in time. On the professional development side, the school continues to be committed to providing funds to the teachers to further their credentials. We are ahead of what we've been budgeting. This is more a timing issue than anything. We expect at the end of the year, we'll be right on budget of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for professional development.
Tom, to Mary Ann, so salaries, it's just for the IT director and the professional?
It's principally for the professional and the IT director, and when the, obviously, was turned up, we're probably going to put the budget together to what we actually have already.
Is there any place where, because we're missing a principal, is that your?
That would factor in the year as well. On instructional supplies, again, currently under budget, this is an area where, again, based on the number of special A students, we have, we have great outside consultants to help administer those services, and we have less students that needed those services, and we had less spend on these students. Student programs, as I talked about, if you remember, we had student programs up again, and we collect fees in for the student program, we expense things out of the student program, essentially right on target with that. Nutrition, the same thing, we need money for nutrition, and all the data is what we have, athletics programs, right on budget, same idea there. Lease cam and taxes, this relates to our lease, and we had some spot on with what we expected to be in terms of where our lease was at this point in time. Taxes have actually come in slightly lower than what we have been anticipating, so ninety-nine percent of what we have budgeted there. So obviously, lease cam and taxes, next biggest expense item that we have after salaries that are out there. Love to think that at some point in the future, we might have a different answer on lease cam and taxes. We don't today, it is what it is. On facilities, facilities relates to maintenance of the facilities, cleaning, things like that, and you'll see there, our custodial expenses have been a little bit under because we did that on our own over the supplement, that's what's principally driving that. Our utility expenses, spot on, up on electric, down on gas, you know, good job of budgeting there. Our IT, a little bit up at this point during the year, this, we believe is essentially just a timing issue at this point in time, expecting we would be spot on with our IT expenses by the end of the year. Auditories, a little bit more than we were budgeting, again, if you look at the numbers, yes, it's a hundred and forty percent, but if you look at the absolute cost, it's twenty thousand versus a budget of fifteen thousand, and I'm talking about a few ten percent there. Legal is where we've been pleasantly surprised, on the one hand, we've been pleasantly surprised, we haven't spent as much on legal as we thought. The reason we haven't spent as much on legal as we thought is because our case, our landlord is not where we've been kept pace that we expected it could be moving. So it's a timing issue is what's reflected there. Other operating costs, this is where outside consultants come in, so obviously, our outside consultant is helping us with the DCS, the outside consultant we brought in for climate survey, things like that, that's what flows through here, and you see a little bit of up on that. Appreciation, anything that's over five thousand dollars, we bring it onto our books, and then we write it off over a useful life. We're a little bit off on forecast there, but that does not have a cash impact on the school. Brings us to our total expenses. If you can highlight the first column over there, I'd like people to remember that million-dollar number, just for a second, so, so hold on to that number in the back of your head for a second. That brings us down to our bottom line, where we're at at this point in time, okay? So we had budgeted that we were going to be at, a column, or a block of columns, we had budgeted that we were going to be at five seven seven, that's not right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not right.
Oh, that's right. Five seven seven is what we've budgeted.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry, that is, yeah. But so that's the year today, so we're at nine hundred thousand, at nine hundred thousand on that income to date, against what we were expecting to do, which is five seven seven. We knew positive there, it's a three six difference, okay? So that is the income side of the house. We just very quickly pull up the balance sheet side of the house, current assets, essentially cash, you'll see a number of six point eight million there. We actually have free unencumbered cash, approximately six million dollars, which eight hundred thousand dollars we have off escrow at this point in time, related to our ongoing dispute with our landlord, of cam charges, calendar maintenance charges at this point in time. If we prevail, that will be eight hundred thousand dollars that we could use for something really good. If you do not prevail, that would be something that we would end up having to pay the landlord at the end of the day. But remember the math, six point eight million minus eight hundred thousand, essentially six million free cash that's out there. What did I say our monthly expenses were? I said our monthly expenses were about a million. So six million sounds like a lot, until you remember that your monthly budget is a million dollars, you basically have six months of cash on hand. So a million sounds like a lot, it would go awful quick. State's facing a one point five billion dollar budget deficit for, you know, the next fiscal year, you'll know what's going to happen, and things like that, so all of this, you know, that's what's up there. So that is the financial board. So that is the financial board. I can do it in two minutes.
All right.
I have a question. When on the twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen?
We expect to be presenting at the March Audit, I actually expect to be presenting probably April Audit Committee, will be where we'll try to present the final budget, we'll try to present a draft at the March Audit, and it's a very small window. So about one month behind where we were last year. Last year, we presented a draft, it's February meeting, and then we presented the final at March.
Other questions? All right, Governance Committee. So there are two things under Governance Committee that we want to do. One is that Board on Trust, we have discussed this before, is a membership program of charter school best practices, it's charter school specific program. It does come with a software tool, but also a lot of access to other charter schools nationwide. The Governance Committee would like to make a recommendation that we adopt Board on Trust beginning, for implementation in April, a one-year membership.
Trial.
A trial, yeah, well, but a, a one-year membership is ten thousand dollars, but we have basically a three-month trial. And we, during that time, from April to June, that's where we're recommending that we actually pilot it, pilot it, and then we make a decision whether we adopt it or not. So I think that.
I think the biggest thing is that really the, the trial is going to be driven by the committee chairs.
Yes, that was the other thing. So one thing that we felt was important was to define how do you see success at the end of this, like how are we feeling that it's delivering any value? Because when we talked to references for our companies, or companies for schools that were using it, they all agreed it's extremely difficult to quantify the value of Board on Trust, but all of them renewed and said it was extremely helpful, helped them in some way. And the references use it in completely different ways. Some use the project management, like the tools, some really like the assessment tools. I mean, I think in our case, it'll be helpful because we do need to do that larger board assessment for charter renewal, so that's helpful to have a third, you know, their assessment for assessment tools, and also get much of the data.
The trial is a, the?
Well, it's ten thousand dollars that we, first, that we'll get with the trial period.
So you get three months, and then if you don't like it, you can cut it.
Yeah, that's really what it is, yeah. So it's, it's.
But they charge your credit card automatically? I did that the night.
And if you don't cancel, right? I know I didn't give two nights, but. That's really where we are. That is our recommendation.
I don't believe in vote on trial.
Yeah, we probably.
We just need a commitment that people are going to use it.
So, sorry, I didn't finish that, yes. The, implementation April, we'll talk about it more on what it is than the question board to recall, you know, because it gives all, all board members access to different little sections of it, there's scheduling that can be done, and there's a lot that can be done with the tool, whether we use it or not, whether we choose to adopt it, that's what we have to try out for. And at the end of that three-month period of time, we'll see if the committee chair felt that is helpful. Open meeting law presentation.
I have one question. Are we going to do this again?
Yeah, we'll do it. It's the third party one, we don't.
We don't have to. All right. Figure it, here, start the lights here. All right, open meeting law overview, this is, go ahead, Tom. So what is OML? Or is it MAB? Not quite. Oh, my laptop, no. On my laptop? Well, maybe, but what it really is, is the open meeting law for Massachusetts, and it's the rules that we're governed by for meetings of business. What I'm going to talk about is the purpose of open meeting law, responsibilities that the board has, or the members of the public body governed by open meeting law have, reasons for executive session, and other miscellaneous aspects of open meeting law. So the purpose. Save the meeting, but. It's for transparency for our constituents, that we meet, meet the goals, so we operate in a transparent manner for our constituents. And one of the key questions of open meeting law is what is a meeting? There are three aspects to a meeting. First, there has to be communication, or talking to each other, that's communication. If you're just standing around and all the members of the board are there, I have no communication. The second, probably the most critical, is deliberation. Are we actively discussing something? Are we bouncing ideas back and forth? Are we discussing something of merit? We could deliberate about the Red Sox and the recent hires, or the success of the Patriots and what they should be doing next year, yes, that'd be deliberating, but that leads us to the third topic, which is jurisdiction. Are we discussing and communicating and deliberating about something that's within our jurisdiction? So we look at the bylaws, it's about ANSA, it's about our charter school. If we are discussing something in that context, then it is meeting all three of the concepts that we are communicating, we are deliberating, and there is something that we are under the jurisdiction of. Questions so far?
Where's the forum coming to?
Coming up. Good questions, hold on to that one. There are a few exceptions for meetings, you can visit, you can visit a site, you can go to a conference together, but not deliberate, and there's a couple others that come into play, but I think that's the important ones. We have some responsibilities. First, you have to announce a meeting, we need to announce a meeting. Thank you, Sarah, for the many, many communications, forty-eight hours in advance, not counting holidays, not counting weekends. We have to watch out for surprises such as President's Day, Martin Luther King Day, others that have gotten us in the past where we weren't able to get to forty-eight hours of communication announcement done. For our process, we've always been working with Sarah, Sarah knows the blast to the communities in question. Second, the meetings have to be accessible. If we have someone with disabilities, we have to make accommodations so that they can participate and listen to the meeting, if they have wheelchairs, or we have interpreters, interpreter for the deaf, or other things, so we have that responsibility. Finally, we have the responsibility to approve the minutes. We have a minutes policy, A one of two, we have minutes that are posted on the website once they are officially booked.
Can we go back one? We, we, as a board, determined that we wanted to post the minutes on the web, but we are not required by open meeting law to post the minutes on the web.
That is correct. So the question is, do we have to post a meeting on the web? We do not. We have to have them available so that someone would request that they can get a copy.
I have a question about the announcements. The announcements have to go to the towns, they have to be posted at the towns? They're posting at them on the website and on all the towns?
The posting on the website is purely informational one. Our requirement is to post to the four core towns, to post also to DEES. Help me out.